Okay, we're going to continue on with our Committee of the Whole. We have three items for us today. The first one is an update on current jail operations. Staff is going to provide an update on booking restrictions as enacted by Sheriff Elfo at the Wachem County Jail. Update will include how the city manages its population during this time, as well as other considerations. And we have, this presentation is going to be by Peter Raffato, our City Attorney, and Brian Heinrich, our Deputy Administrator.
And the Mayor's going to say something first.
And the Mayor.
And Assistant Deputy Chief Dahl is here in case there's any police-type questions about what we've been doing.
Okay.
I just want to make it very clear before we start that I believe this council, and I agree with it, has public safety as their number-one responsibility in our community. And having said that, I acknowledge and appreciate all the staff in the city that has tried very hard to manage the jail population since there have been restrictions. We continue to do the same thing now that there's booking restrictions too. And circumstances change. So I just wanted to be very clear, though, that we believe that in working with, cooperatively with, the jail, that we could manage our population so that booking restrictions would not be necessary. And I just wanted to make that very clear up front.
Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. Hopefully you've had a chance to review the memo that's in your packet. There was also an article and an op-ed in the Bellingham Herald in recent days. Would certainly try to answer any questions you might have about the memorandum. I think it's worth noting that the jail population's a dynamic number. I believe the sheriff checks the population three to four times a day. So at the time when this memo was written, which was a week ago, it was accurate to that time. And I don't know if, Peter, you have a population today, but I know towards the end of last week, Bellingham had only three inmates in there who were awaiting mental health competency evaluation at Western State Hospital. So we effectively had everyone out that we possibly could. And I think there were several times over the course of last week that, again, subject to the population check, we were either on restrictions or on some, or off. So like I said, it's dynamic. We would certainly try to answer any questions you might have. Go ahead.
Yeah, Peter Raffato, City Attorney's Office. So on the number of inmates, one thing to keep in mind, and I think we've tried to make this clear whenever we talk about the jail population, sometimes it may be confusing to the public, but there are Bellingham-only inmates, which means inmates who only have Bellingham charges and they're not combined with a felony charge. And the reason that's important is because those are the only inmates that Bellingham has ever authorized to transfer, to place on EHM, so that's why we've been focused on that number. The other aspect of it is we've been focused on the number of those Bellingham-only inmates in the main jail, keeping in mind that that is the concern about population as expressed to us by the sheriff's office. So we have not always talked about the number of Bellingham-only inmates, for example, in the Work Center. The reason that the main jail is more of an issue than the Work Center is because the Work Center has 150-bed capacity. And since January 1, there has really never been maybe once over 100, but typically it's between 80 and 90 inmates in the Work Center. So that's why that's not a concern. So whenever you see a number, and there was a number stated in the Herald about something like 100 inmates, don't know where that number came from, but you always have to really delve down into the numbers. For example, and we do a snapshot, Ryan Anderson in the prosecutor's office does a snapshot. This was the snapshot on July 8, the Friday before booking restrictions. We had six Bellingham-only inmates in the main jail. We had 20 Bellingham-plus inmates in the main jail. So those would be inmates combined with a felony, not inmates that were authorized to do anything about in terms of our own transfer, EHM, or whatever. Combined, that's 26. At the Work Center, again, the same snapshot, we had four Bellingham-only inmates. We had seven Bellingham-plus inmates, and combined, we had nine. If you total all that together, the largest number that we can come up with, even including Bellingham-plus, total all those together, you get 37. So it's important, whenever you see a number, you need to delve into the details to understand what that number is, keeping in mind that what we have control over and what we don't have control over. So I can, I have a couple other things, but... So the other thing I would just say is that, you know, regardless of, you know, there's been discussion about Option 1, Option 2. In our view, it's never been a sort of a box-checking exercise. We're doing everything we can to move inmates out of the jail in a timely fashion. And we committed to the jail that if we get noticed, we need to remove more inmates. We'll do everything within our power that's written into the agreement to remove more inmates. And we're still committed to doing that. At the end of the day, it's going to take a lot of good faith on all parties to achieve the numbers that the sheriff's office is talking about, and so we will continue to do that.
Clarification on, oops, sorry.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Clarification on the Bellingham-plus numbers. With that, they've got felonies, so they are going to be held in the Wachem County Jail regardless of anything that Bellingham does. Is that correct? So that's not counting against us in terms of a Bellingham, you know... If they were to notify us that you have to get people out, those numbers wouldn't be counted. Is that correct?
That's correct. To date, we have never been, to date, we have not been authorized to do anything about an inmate that has a Wachem County misdemeanor or felony charge when it's combined with a Bellingham charge. So to date, that is not something we can do anything about. We do get billed for that appropriately, a share, it's proportioned out, for any bed days where that individual is on a Bellingham charge and a felony charge, or on a Bellingham charge and some other jurisdiction's charge. But when you talk about this specific exercise of trying to make reductions, we do not have authority independently of the county. We can't say, okay, well, we're going to arrange for that person to serve time on a bracelet, or we're going to try to put that person on electronic co-monitoring pre-trial, or we're going to try to transport that inmate to Yakima County. Those are, options aren't available to us for those Bellingham inmates who also have another, like, a felony charge.
Well, the actual number on that whole thing at that time was six, right? Bellingham responsibility.
The number in the main jail of Bellingham-only inmates on Friday was six. This changes hourly.
Yeah.
I believe the number stayed in the Herald. I think that may have been the day of booking. I mean, the day that booking restrictions were imposed, I'm not certain about that. Pretty confident we didn't have an untoward number of bookings over the weekend, although there are usually a number of bookings over the weekend.
And I'd just like to add one thing to that. When Peter was describing the fact that someone with a mixed charge, we don't have sole control over what happens with that person. However, we could cooperate with the county jail and figure out managing that population if it was appropriate. But that takes the county saying yes, that they'd like to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I can follow up on that. I mean, all the tools that we're utilizing, the programs that we've implemented, the programs that we're looking at are all available to all jurisdictions in addressing the jail population. It's not something that is unique to Bellingham's inmate population. There's obviously a difference between felony inmates and misdemeanor inmates, but there are Wachem County misdemeanor inmates as well through their district court.
Councilmember Hamel, then Lilicust.
I'm trying to come to a better understanding of the numbers here. This is kind of a two-part observation slash question. So we're seeing 37 approximately are Bellingham-only inmates on Friday. Mixed, I'm sorry, Bellingham and Bellingham-plus inmates.
If you combine main jail and Work Center and Bellingham and Bellingham-plus, you arrive at the number 37. And that would not include someone who's on county EHM. So again, you always have to get into the details on these numbers.
Okay. So the population is roughly 300-plus inmates, is that correct, between the Work Center and the downtown facility?
So I think the number stated in the Herald, again, it depends on the day, but I think it was 330.
Okay, so we're just over 10% of that are Bellingham folks. So I'm just trying to understand the numbers because what the sheriff is saying is something that's different than that. And he said on Friday, while there are, there's often a mixture of charges from multiple jurisdictions and corresponding responsibility, Bellingham initiates approximately half of the charges for those that are held in the county jail. Is that correct?
So David Dahl might be able to express this more clearly, but keep in mind that initiating a felony charge, perhaps, I can't speak for the sheriff's office on this, but initiating a Bellingham arrest could be for a felony. But keep in mind that once that person is booked, they are no longer, they're a county responsibility. It may have been, and felony, felonies are often initiated, if they're in the city of Bellingham, they are initiated by a Bellingham Police Department, but once they are booked, they become a county responsibility if it's a felony.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I appreciate the kind of very even-handed approach that I see the administration taking on this. I'd have a hard time doing that because I can't remember being more dismayed or disappointed in a local elected official. Sheriff Elfo's comments don't seem to be helpful, they seem to be misleading. For example, this comment that we initiate half of the prisoners, that unfairly represents the fact that we have a small handful of prisoners inside the jail. And even, this is what just made me the most, in the memo, you wrote, Peter, "Bellingham could be in a position in which it removes all of its inmates from the main jail, but booking restrictions would remain in place anyway." We're not really part of the solution, we can't be part of the problem, but the way things are discussed and directed at us by people like Sheriff Elfo, and very unhelpfully, is to point the finger at Bellingham, like we need to do something different, like the problem is created by us. I think that's not helpful, not truthful. And so I praise Kelly administration for not getting too deep into the fray. I kind of feel like we need to get into the fray, or someone needs to get into the fray and call out what is just not a very helpful or productive attitude. It feels like we're playing politics with the jail, whereas right here, the staff is talking about solutions and practicalities and just, you know, doing the work that needs to be done as public officials. But the larger public discussion does not seem to be that practical or solutionary, and that's disappointing to me.
Mayor Kelly, and then Councilmember Burnham.
I hope that the comments I made at the beginning of this are what we all remember, which is our first priority is public safety. Our first responsibility is to the people that live in the city of Bellingham and expect us to be adults and to always look out after what's right for the public. That's what we are doing. I appreciate your appreciation, but I believe it's part of my job to do that. And we have opportunities now, hopefully, to continue talking to the small cities and the county about the jail, or any new jail proposal. We also have a myriad of other things that we need to work on with the county. So I choose to not, this is not personal for me, this is part of my job, and the staff has been extremely professional in their dealings with the county, and we will continue to do that. So anybody feel a little frustrated, you know, go have a cup of tea, because anything that we do now that doesn't have something that's directly laser-focused on the solutions to our problems probably won't be helpful in the long run to the people that we represent. So don't worry that we are being soft. We are not being soft, but we're being very professional and focusing on what to do with people that can't be housed in the jail anymore.
Councilmember Burnham, then Murphy.
This question is probably more for those watching, because I think I know the answer to this, but with this policy that Sheriff Elfo has thrown out, Bellingham has been, is it true that Bellingham has been singled out as the only municipality that this is affecting? Is that correct?
Well, I don't know if Peter wanted to add to that. I was just going to comment that going back to Option 1 versus Option 2, I think when we presented that some time ago, it was with the idea that Option 2 gave the city the greatest amount of ability to plan for whatever may happen in terms of the management of the facility. And I think it's also worth noting that if you look back at that document, the sheriff retains the ultimate discretion to manage the facility. So in some ways, choosing one option over the other may not even be necessary if the sheriff retains that ability. I don't know, Peter, if you want to add anything else.
Yeah, so just to follow up on what Brian is talking about here. Option 1, when it was presented, the city of Bellingham had certain problems with it. It required a turnaround of, I don't know, between around four to six hours after first appearance to transfer someone. And it also prioritized the transfer of pre-trial inmates out of the jail over post-conviction inmates. And it's always been the city's approach that post-conviction inmates are much better suited for transfer because you don't have the issues of legal process for someone who has not been convicted of a crime. You have to, they have certain rights, and we want to make sure that we insured those rights, and that we had to get certain processes in place, for example, in Yakima County, to make sure that was a viable option. In fact, independently of all this, last week, we had a test of a remote hearing process between Bellingham and Yakima County, which went well. We're very close to being able to have that process in place. We always felt that with Option 2, assuming we received notice, that additional numbers would have to be removed from the jail, that we would receive that notice prior to booking restrictions, and that we would, again, do everything within our power to get folks out. And if that ultimately meant pre-trial, so be it, but again, we wanted to prioritize the transfer of post-conviction inmates. The agreement apparently wasn't, apparently there was not a meeting of the minds, apparently, on Option 2. I guess I'll say it that way. And so here we are with booking restrictions being imposed regardless of what our efforts are to move people out of the jail quickly. It's just a mathematical approach at this point. But there is a difference between, to be fair, there is a difference between Option 2 and Option 1. Option 2 explicitly recognized the authority that the sheriff has to impose booking restrictions. And although I would say that Option 1 has that in it as well, if you look at the first line of Option 1, it says that the cities are entitled to use jail space subject to space available in the jail. So the sheriff's going to retain the right to impose booking restrictions. He had that right under the previous agreement, he had that, he ultimately had that right under Option 1, and he has that right under Option 2. So Option 2 for the city presented an opportunity to really continue focusing on post-conviction, to work on the pre-trial, and when we receive that notice, we'll do everything we can to avoid the need for booking restrictions.
May I follow up with a comment regarding the response?
Sure, and then Councilmember Murphy is next in our queue here.
I have to agree with Councilwoman Lilicust in terms of how I feel about how this has been handled, because I really think we have gone to extraordinary lengths to work to try to reduce the numbers at jail, to look at, seriously look at jail alternatives and put measures in place to reduce those numbers. We've taken just about every step that we could take to make that happen. And what it feels like is happening is that this feels like pure retaliation because we didn't fall in lockstep with the big jail proposal. And I could be wrong, but boy, that's what it feels like. And, you know, I really don't appreciate, we do care totally about public safety and making this process work, and finding the best methods that work. And we should be working together on this instead of this. And so this is a little hard to take at times, but we need to continue focusing on what's good for the citizens here. And Mayor and staff, I thank you for doing all of that.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that initially, I was also extremely frustrated to learn about the restriction, but almost as immediately, I had faith in our city. I have faith in the fact that we are going to be the city that is going to really try these jail alternatives and diversions. We will test them, we will show that this is the way that we can decrease the jail population by doing the right thing. And also, I appreciate administration looking at other resources to help get us through this. That will lessen the impact of what anyone or anything tries to do to us in relation to the jail situation.
Councilmember Becker.
I think that it's important as a council, when we're talking to the community, that we don't make assumptions of other people's behavior because we can incite our own public. So I don't know what the motivations are behind, but being an elected official that's made decisions and had to have people not like my decision and said some negative things about me, I think we should be very careful, especially our whole nation right now is in a little bit of a state. So with that said, not knowing the motivations, I do appreciate exactly what you guys have done and what you continue to do, is being very professional in it, and I would expect the county is doing the same and has things that we're not aware of that's causing them to make these decisions. With that, the question, and if I'm getting into the weeds, just let me know, and I can ask this at another time, but since we're kind of cataloging a lot, because we're really having to keep tabs on Bellingham-only in all these different venues, is there a staff member that has a time or is already looking at, are there any commonalities in the types of crimes that are happening that are going in, or the misdemeanits, so that we might find another solution or a policy change that we could make that doesn't require somebody to go to jail, but maybe requires them to go to treatment? Are we seeing if there's any patterns? My question.
We're looking at jail numbers and offenses in a lot of different ways, from a lot of different approaches. So I don't know if, I would say that we're seeing patterns, but we're, you know, whenever you talk about a new program, for example, EHM, you have to say, okay, well, given the state of the law and given what we know about the offenders, how many people would be amenable to that program? So we did that before we started EHM. And that, it's a good point, because at the end of the day, given Bellingham's relatively low numbers in the jail, one always has to ask, well, for a new program, how much more can you impact it? Because there are going to be individuals that an alternative is not the right answer. And so then you're looking at, with a new program, how is it really cost-effective if you don't have enough, a good problem, right? You don't have enough people for that, to be in that program. But we do look at it whenever we look at a potential new program.
And obviously, Dan and Darlene and Jeff, our community paramedic, and I sit on the Alternatives Task Force. When we're talking with the sheriff, he was talking about exploring friendship, as we've been using. And he acknowledged that the technology that we use is probably more up-to-date than the technology that the county's using. We're also have been asking about what we might do with the diversion center at Division Street, so that it could be alternative beds for people. The lead program that our police have been looking at is now something that I think Dan is talking about with others, which is a way to pre-arrest, look at what should happen with people. And I think that our municipal court is managing charges that come forward, and I know, David, you might have something that you could share that the police are doing in response. So we're trying to do some different things. One of them Brian mentioned, which is driving without a license. There are some discussions about a change in policy about that, that would keep people out of the jail. So David, do you have anything to add?
I can. David Dahl, Operations Deputy Chief, oversee those folks that are in uniform and can talk about the impact of what's happened in the last 12 days as well. We've been on these suspensions the last 13 days. We look at PR-ing folks. We got an order from the judge to be able to PR certain offenses that have warrants.
Can you say what PR means for the public?
Yeah, it's a personal reconnaissance, it's basically a promissory note to appear in court. And we did that a few years ago with a very minimal success rate, but now's the time to try it again. We have been on 12 different levels of restriction in the last 13 days, from Level 1 to Level 2 to no restrictions. And the impact on the organization has been that when we are on Level 2, we are releasing DUI arrests to a sober individual. That takes some time of our officer off the street. We are PR-ing certain warrants or not confirming certain warrants. And as of this time, we've only had one transport of a warrant arrest to score. Interestingly enough, it was an arrest made by Wachem County Sheriff's deputies, but since it was a Bellingham domestic violence warrant, we were responsible for transporting the individual down to Everett, which took two officers out of service for about four hours and 10 minutes. We are looking at potential transportation programs right now. We're looking at some options that might come our way to keep those officers back on the street and keep them working in the city. But we are also open to suggestions and, you know, trying to do as many things that come our way to keep our cops on the street.
Councilmember Barker.
The reason why I was asking about the patterns and if we see something, I know there's so many reasons of why misdemeanors and all of that, it could be stayed, or the ones that we actually made the policy for. I had the pleasure of attending the thing down in Everett about chart and lead and radar, and I don't know what all those stand for, so go look them up on the internet. But what I, the thing that I took away the most that I thought was really something we could do before we make a full program is they talked about incentivizing referrals versus incentivizing arrests. And after talking to the chief, we don't incentivize arrests here in Bellingham, but if there were something where we could make a discretionary policy on the police officer, that if he, if it was below a certain amount of drug, or it was a certain type of conviction that we have control over, if they're able to connect that person to resources, could we do something like that sooner than later if we're seeing that in a certain pattern of the people that we're trying to keep out of the jail?
There is a tremendous amount of discretion already exercised in the street. We try to get folks hooked up with a hot team. We're looking at a behavioral services officer. We have one particular individual who works with us part-time to identify folks who need help and not need to go to jail. So I think we're doing as much as we can right now to divert, get people services that they need instead of booking them for a crime.
And part of the problem, as you're all aware, is there aren't beds. There aren't treatment beds, there aren't mental health beds, there aren't triage beds. So all good intentions need to have a full system to support it, and we don't have those now. The ones we have are great, but it's not enough.
Councilmember Hamel.
I guess this speaks to Councilmember Murphy's and Barker's points about Bellingham doing a lot out there in the community and to what the mayor just mentioned. We are exploring different options, and I believe, Councilmember Murphy, that we are a community that values and prioritizes fair treatment, but also just treatment of individuals. What's concerning to me, though, is that regardless of the introduction or the implementation or continuance of any of these programs beyond the capacity issues that the mayor just brought up, are that, under either Option 1 or Option 2 that was presented to us, you know, Mr. Raffato just mentioned this, that it's subject to the, Option 1 is space subject to availability within the correctional facility. So ultimately, the sheriff does have discretion over who can get into the facility. So, and it's an actual number or increase in inmates, or a potential increase in number of inmates. So there's a lot of latitude there with that type of language in the agreement. And I'm just very concerned over our ability to... And I'm, I'm just very concerned over our, our ability to get people into the jail if they need to go there. And what Deputy Dahl just mentioned in terms of taking officers off the street for over four hours in our community, and I don't know if that happened during a night shift or a weekend shift, but I know that we have fewer officers available during those times. So that, I have grave, grave concerns over the potential outcomes of any agreement that we have with, with the sheriff at this time.
Well, I just wanted to thank the city staff and the Bellingham Police Department for being extremely nimble and proactive in accommodating all the latest in our booking restrictions. But I will say that I'm a little troubled that only the city of Bellingham has been, has been subjected to booking restrictions. And I do feel as though we have been singled out, and that doesn't feel appropriate. It feels like the incarceration effects in our county affect all of us, the population affects all of us, and I find it disappointing that the county is not looking at the overall public safety in regards to this matter. And, and I'm hoping, and I'm putting the plea out there, that the county actually look at the measures that we are using and see if they're willing to look at accommodating those measures in the practices that they have. So this could be equal across the board and not just be a city of Bellingham restriction, but the entire county be using the same, that it be equal amongst everyone and that we're all under the same regulation. So that is my request. Is there anyone else who wishes to add? Mayor Kelly?
Um, no.
Okay. All right. So this was for information only. We are going to move on to our third agenda item, oh, sorry, our second agenda item for Committee of the Whole. This is the appointment of the voter pamphlet for against statement committees for Greenways Levy. For your information, each ballot measure on the November ballot that the state law in Waukem County Auditor's Office require the local jurisdiction to take steps to identify persons for appointment to, for, and against statement committees for the local voters' pamphlet. Each committee will write the statement and the rebuttal advocating for the measure, the pro committee, or against the measure, the con committee. During the June 20th, 2016 City Council meeting, the city announced that it was requesting volunteers for the committees. The city also requested volunteers through its official website. The city also contacted various organizations requesting volunteers, names, and a poll, of proposed committee members will be provided to the council for approval. And I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Peter Raffado.
Yeah, thank you. So as of just before this meeting, so we do have three names that have stepped forward for the pro for committee. We still had not received any names for the con slash against committee. So I'll read the names for the for, and, and then we'll be looking for a vote for approval. So the names are Tim Douglas, Rod Pembel, and Julie Guy.
Peter, did you say four? Because that said, there's three names there, but.
So four, it's, it's.
Oh, four, as in pro.
Yeah, it's, yeah. You see it different, you see it different, worded differently in different places in the statute and the auditor's materials, so, yeah.
I will entertain a motion for approval.
Move on, move on.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion.
I guess it'd be a question for Peter, what happens if there's, if no one steps forward with the con committee?
So the, the material we received from the county auditor states that the local jurisdiction has an obligation to make a good faith effort to identify members for both committees. The agenda bill outlines what we've done. We will itemize those and we'll, so on the pro for side, we'll provide the names to the auditor. On the, on the, for the con side, we have to list the efforts that we made. And then the auditor makes a determination whether there is anything left to do to try to identify anyone for the, the con committee. So that's, that's my understanding of the process.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
I just wanted to thank the volunteers for stepping forward.
Any other comments, discussion? Okay, we have a motion in front of us, and this is to approve the following individuals for appointment to the Greenways for Levy Pro Four Statement Committee. They are Tim Douglas, Rod Pembel, and Julie Guy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Peter. Okay, we are going to move on to our third item today. This is the review of the draft 26 comprehensive plan. Specifically, we are focusing on the economic development chapter and the environment chapter. Staff is going to highlight the key changes to the updated economic chapter, environmental chapter, and this discussion will not include a line-by-line, page-by-page review of the chapters. Rather, committee members are requested to review the red text, which includes the key changes from the 206 plan, as well as the purple text, which includes the planning commission's recommendations. Suggested changes will be incorporated into a comment tracker and incorporated into the final plan upon a recommendation from the council. If anybody wants to see that online, that is at cob.org/compplan for the draft plan. After the staff presentation, there will be a 15-minute public comment period followed by council discussion. And I am going to turn this over to Greg Ockett, our Assistant Director.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, Greg Ockett, Planning and Community Development Department. With me are a number of staff members today who worked on these two chapters. Today is the review of chapters beginning with the letter E, Economic Development and As with all of our discussions, no action is needed today. We will document any changes that you would like to suggest or any questions that you have through the comment tracker and respond to those in writing. We have scheduled time at the August 8th meeting where we will come back to you with those changes, those answers to those questions. We'll open the meeting with that discussion, so don't feel like this is your only chance to talk about these two chapters today. And with that, I guess just, our next meeting is next Monday, where we will be doing that with the land use and housing chapters, where we'll come back to you with responses to the suggested changes that you made and the questions that you proposed to us. So we'll do that next Monday. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Lisa.
And also next Monday, just to add to that, we'll also be touching on the capital facilities and transportation comments that you had as well. So with that, Lisa Poole, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. And as Greg stated, we'll be discussing the environment and economic development chapters today. I'll go through the state requirements, if any, the policy foundation and the key changes for the economic development chapter, and then I'll pass it over to Kim to go through the environment chapter. So I just wanted to state upfront that these two chapters are a little different than the other chapters in the plan, as they were adopted in 2012 and 2013. So they're fairly new. You won't see a lot of changes in these chapters. For the economic development chapter, so this chapter's not required by the state, but most cities have an economic development chapter in their comprehensive plans. It makes sense to do so because we are required to include a summary of the local economy, the summary of the strengths and weaknesses of the local economy, and policies, programs, and projects to foster economic development and growth. So this is the policy foundation of the economic development chapter that was adopted in 2013, and it was carried forward to the update. So you'll see these themes throughout the chapter. A positive business climate, which means the creation of a supportive environment for business retention and expansion. Economic diversification. A diversified economy provides a wide variety of job opportunities in various sectors suited to all skill levels of the workforce. Land and infrastructure. Adequate land supply and corresponding infrastructure are key to growing existing businesses and creating opportunities for new businesses. Vibrant commercial centers. Our urban villages offer opportunities for job growth. Each urban village plan includes goals, policies, and strategies to support the city's economic development goals. And then quality of life. Providing a high quality of life and maintaining the livability of Bellingham are effective tools for attracting, attracting and retaining quality businesses. So some of the key changes, as I stated, this was just adopted three years ago. So we've updated the characteristics on our local economy. We've updated the employment capacity figures and map. We've also added some photos to this chapter as well as the others. And then there was one new policy proposed by the Waukem County Health Department when they conducted their audit of our plan, and that was to tie locally-based food production to the local economy. So that's policy ED 48. Then the planning commission's recommendations, they made seven changes to this chapter. Most are pretty minor. They added two new policies, and staff concurs with these changes. So one of the new policies, I'll just point this out, was, it goes as follows. Industrial zoned land in the urban growth area should be reserved for industrial uses and appropriate accessory uses. And then the other new policy states, working with the Port of Bellingham, Waukem County, and others, explore and pursue opportunities to solicit and attract new investment and expansion from businesses outside the Bellingham area, both regionally and nationally. So those are the two new policies, and the rest are pretty minor. So with that, that's all we have for the economic development chapter. Did you have any questions, or did you want to move into the environment and then ask questions?
Maybe we'll do them separately. Councilmember Lillquist.
I just had a small comment on the map on page 10. How current does that need to be? For example, lands with commercial capacity down along Lincoln, that's now developed as residential, so the commercial capacity is gone. And then up in the Codota area, there's an area that says has mixed industrial and commercial capacity. It's now owned by the city's public park. Does that need to be revised, or is it okay if it's accurate at a point in time?
So the map was produced in May?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll check with Chris Beehe and make sure that if there are any changes that are needed, we'll make those. Thank you.
As we go through these proceedings, maybe if there's a question on something and not everyone has that information, you could put it up so that the public could see and everyone can see what we're referring to. Thank you.
Councilmember Barker.
My question is on, if you want to pull up page 19, can throw it on there. So it's the SWOT analysis and the fourth bullet under weaknesses. It just says typically higher unemployment rate and lower average earnings than the state and nation, along with the high cost of living, present challenges with affordable housing and general affordability in the area. My, my interest is when I went back through the policies, I, I didn't really see policy language regarding economic upward mobility of our residents. And there are very specific things in your built environment and how you integrate your neighborhoods and do different things that really promote that upward mobility. And it's important, as I've brought up before, we, we don't have these Alice numbers in the report. I'd really like to see them in there. But when you start talking about the working poor and the poor being 49% of your entire city, making sure that we're doing everything we can to give people opportunity to move upwardly within our city is super important. So I didn't see any language, but I'm asking if there is language in there or if that, you're amenable to, have you had thoughts about, because that's just as much economy, I think, as just businesses.
I believe there are policies in here related to living wage jobs.
I saw that. I'm, I'm talking about the.
Right. No, I mean.
Opportunities to move forward in housing or like all of those types of things. We know, I think there was a really great Harvard study that showed that low-income boys who grow up in high poverty, high minority areas work significantly less than girls, and it makes them more likely to substitute crime instead of a job. And, and these are all because of our built environment. So I was, I think what I've learned in this is it's probably less about motions and more about letting the council know where I'm going with this and maybe submitting these so you guys can take a look at them and bring them back. And I guess at that point, I know if I have to make a motion if you weren't able to find language. But I think it's extremely important that we are not only talking about living wage jobs and, but we're also just talking about how are we going to raise people up? How are we going to make sure that you're going to come here and we're going to make sure the opportunities are there for you, not only in the built environment, but, but in, in jobs in the industry as well.
Yes, yeah, we will definitely take that under consideration, include it in the comment tracker, and then put a response in there for you.
I'll give you my paper.
Okay. Sounds good.
Councilmember Borneman.
Oh, no.
Oh, you, oh, sorry, I misunderstood that. All right, was there anyone else who had some question? Councilmember Barker?
Under urban villages, I didn't, I know that we have, we are already working towards incentivizing, especially to get certain urban villages a little bit of a, a pep, and then hopefully pulling that back. But we don't, I didn't see policy that says we're going to do that. So I know we do that, but then I was looking back at here and I was like, oh, that's interesting. I don't, so I might have missed it, but I think if we're doing something, we certainly should have it in a document that says. So then when we move into another urban village, we do the same thing for that urban village that we did prior. And again, the document's very new to me, so I may have missed or misunderstood a policy. But if we don't have that in there, I'd, I'd like to see it so we could reference it.
Specific to incentives?
Yeah.
And the land use chapter includes that.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of crossover, but, and we couldn't repeat policies in every chapter, but it's, it's there.
If it's, if it's where it needs to be, that's great.
And we can reference that in the economic development chapter. We can reference the land use chapter policy.
Yeah.
If you like.
Okay, and then that, just that part of that last one, and I have it here, I'll include it, but that, I really think that the Alice study is extremely important for our community to, to understand our demographic, what's going on.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Sure. What Ms. Poole just said, I would really appreciate. A number of times in the document, one chapter referred to something that was really closely related to something in another chapter. And it would be nice if you could add those pointers when they exist internally, because otherwise it does give an incomplete picture, even though if you reference other chapters, there may be, there would be something which addressed, say, our built environments and whether or not that provided opportunities. It's over here, but it's not here. It'd be nice to refer to it. So if you could find that opportunity, I'd appreciate it.
Council, any other questions on this part? Okay, shall we proceed?
Pull that back for you.
I'm Kim Wheel. I'm an environmental planner with the Planning Department. And for the most part, the Planning Department has written this chapter. We've had really important and significant contributions from the Public Works, Natural Resources Division, and Parks Department. So since 1980, the Comp Plan has been the guide for Bellingham's growth and development. And with the 2012 edition of the environment chapter, we can help ensure that growth and development are consistent with our community values and goals, which is one of the GMA requirements. These are the main state requirements for the environment chapter, which, as you can see, is not required, although there's some components that are. These are the key environmental features and values of Bellingham, and that's how the chapter is structured, as you can see. The thought behind the first chap, the first time we adopted this in 2012 was, well, we've got this infrastructure, we've got planning for capital facilities and for transportation. We also need to have a comprehensive plan for our environmental framework, if you will. And that was kind of the idea behind this, this chapter. Lake Waukem, of course, has to be number one, right? That's our drinking water supply. So it's one of our policy foundations. And I just, I'm not going to read anything except one new, it's not actually new, but it's a new, one of the policies in the Lake Waukem section of the chapter, and it says, implement programs, regulations, and incentives that result in sustainable land use practices such as low-impact development that prevent the degradation of water quality in the lake. And we have developed several regulations. We don't allow, for example, ADUs in the watershed. We have limits on subdivisions. So if you have concerns about, well, how much more growth can occur? I know you've seen recently some of our projections, but we aren't going to be able to, with existing regulations, anyway, increase densities there. And we have the ability here with this policy to provide incentives, programs, all kinds of things that we already do to, to limit that so we can protect the lake. The shoreline master program is one of the required components of G, from GMA. And that includes policies that cover public access, uses, so shoreline uses, protection, and recreation. Critical areas in the city include wetlands, streams, habitat, frequently flooded areas, and geologically hazardous areas. And because we have goals and policies in the Comp Plan, we've been able to develop regulations and other GMA requirement. So we. So we have our critical area ordinance, we recently updated that. Fish and wildlife habitat is important to the citizens of Bellingham and to the city as well. And we demonstrate that with our recent projects like the Patten Creek daylighting, the Squawken Creek reroute. We put a lot of our resources and community heart into our fish and wildlife habitat. Urban forestry is all the trees in the city, everything from a street tree to the tree in your backyard to mature trees in our parks. And I'll talk about that in a moment in the next slide. Air quality, that's kind of a new subsection this time, though. It's kind of, was referenced in various areas in the, in the comp plan. And we're fortunate that our, our, we don't burn fossil fuels here for our power. And, but the second biggest source of CO2 is from transportation. So land use is really big in helping us protect our air quality, because we want to have, as you've seen in the other chapters, development that's on high transit corridors and is thoughtful, smart development. Climate change. In 2007, we finished the Climate Protection Action Plan, and we have a draft climate adaptation plan. And that includes strategies for increasing resiliency to natural, for the natural and the built environment. And then finally, the Energy and Resource Conservation Section. As you know, 2016 is an energy year, as proclaimed by the mayor. And that is focusing on saving energy and enhancing renewable resources, and then also increasing our ability to be resilient to or adapt to things that happen from climate As in the Economic Chapter, this time around, there aren't a whole lot of changes. But in the original 2012 plan, or, excuse me, chapter, we took goals and policies that were scattered throughout the comp plan and consolidated them. There was many, many, many redundancies, because we wanted to hold on to every single important goal and policy, but there were some that were just repetitive. So we've removed those, we refined and defined the language. And again, maybe, maybe speaking to some of your comments, you might not see something in this chapter that's in another, so if, you know, we can cross-reference if there's something that you think isn't there. We've added maps and photos, which are helpful, to understanding what we're saying in the chapter. And then a few new policies. These aren't the only ones, but the main ones, the Habitat Restoration Technical Assessment. There's a policy to use that when designing projects and designing location of development so that we're mindful of protecting our key ecological services and attributes in the city. It's a really important document. We say it, we use it in a couple of policies. Urban Forestry Management Plan, now there's a policy to develop one in the, sometime in this next planning horizon. And that's important, especially as we start to see increasing costs of utilities and managing our infrastructures, the role trees play, really, whether it's air quality or water quality. And that Urban Forestry Management Plan would be a very helpful tool to ensure that. And then the resiliency to natural disasters is really going to entail working with our neighboring jurisdictions and incorporating best available science. Just two minor changes to policies. And the first one, did you have that in front of you? Made a minor modification to EV 13. And then the new policy, I'll just read it short, is to encourage development and mitigation options, such as a mitigation bank or in-lu feet program. And that has to do with wetland mitigation primarily. And the next slide is your tentative council review schedule. So do you have any questions on the Environment Chapter?
Councilmember Barker?
So I have a question, and it's sticky, so I'll see who jumps up to answer it. The goal number one, the EV, limited development in the Lake Waukam watershed. I've brought this up a couple of times, but I haven't been very eloquent in the way that I'm trying to present it, so I'm going to try it again. I completely understand the goal, and it totally makes sense to, to limit development and to buy the lands around it. But when we do that as a city, I think, I feel as though we should recognize that we are improving people's property values left and right, and we're limiting the ability for other people to live in that area, so we're making it very exclusive. But it's just, it's, it's one of those unintended consequences we have to deal with. But when we do something like that and we don't acknowledge it, it, it kind of gets left out there. And for me, it seems like if we put all that together and we look at the holistic costs of all the things that we're doing to keep our water clean, and all the benefits that we're giving many of the residents who live around there, I think it would be easier to look at, and we wouldn't pit things like the invasive species. You know, we kind of see that, and then it's not really, it's expensive, and it's not really doing everything. And then the HIP program, and then we put all that on all the taxpayers. And I, there's just something there that, as a constituent before and still as a council member, I didn't, I don't see anything that says, when we do these things, look at the unintended consequences and at least acknowledge them. And then on top of that, really look at this plan altogether, so we can see who, who should be burdened with some of these, who, who have we given benefits to that probably could handle the burden more than all of the people. And I don't, I don't know where, I'm still working on how to bring that forward. I guess all these are opportunities for me to find a better way to say it. But it's just, there's so much cost, and there's so much going, and we look at it separately, and, and everybody's taking on the burdens. And I think it would just, we're creating an improvement, we're giving some people money from that, and equity. It, it just seems like we should look at it from both sides and then see who might be able to suffer the burden as we do our water, and who should have certain responsibilities that we should make on them. So I know that might be a separate conversation, but it seems there might be able to be something in this chapter that really recognizes when we do things like limit development, what are those unintended consequences that are happening? And then at least we should have to identify them. And then we can work from there on what's happening. That made very little sense.
That might be, if you're still kind of fleshing it out, it might be a good topic for the Lake Waukam Policy Group, if you haven't brought it to that group yet.
I just think, I think in the future, as we, yeah.
To start, you know, to have a discussion about it.
Yeah, I just, anytime we limit development, we're, we're causing so many other things. We need to be very careful. So yeah, I, I'll do that, and then also send my comments in. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Just continue to try to get this all to go.
Is there a request for the staff in that moment?
I was trying to get there, and I'm still
Information?
Or? I'm still not there. I guess I'm looking for some help in understanding. Do, it just seems like when I bring it up, a lot of people feel like, oh, well, you want development there. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that anytime we limit development, we need to look at that and look at the lake more holistically so we can make the burdens where they need to be and where people can handle them. But I don't know how to put that in the policy.
Mayor Kelly?
Well, and I think, I think as we look at the Environmental Chapter and we look at Lake Waukam, obviously, we all benefit from having a clean drinking water source.
Yes.
We all do. And the primary purpose of the policies around Lake Waukam are not to facilitate development and not necessarily make it a place where everyone can live. I know you and I have had this because, because we can't recreate our, our watershed. The other thing is, and this is just kind of thinking of the impacts on people that live in the watershed too, there are other policies that we could put in place that would, that would potentially affect people that live there in how they deal with grass or how they deal with, I mean, there's a lot of, of those kind of policy things about protecting our environment. And we also need to acknowledge that as your property value goes up, your property taxes go up. So, and those go into the general fund for benefit of, of everybody. So I, if you can think of a different specific thing, but it's like, it, it, when you're talking about Lake Waukam, we're talking about protecting our drinking water source. So the policies have to really hit that, and that drinking water source is for everybody. And I, and I understand what you're saying, April, but I, sometimes, sometimes, certain things have different priorities than other things. So.
It's just, sometimes I think we have a lot of these discussions, and, and it's, we're, we're having them in other venues, and a lot of people aren't getting to hear them. So I know some of these are sticky and they don't really make sense, but they're things I talk with a fair amount of constituents about. So I thought I'd bring it up, see what kind of response I got, and then at least the public knows we're, we're talking about them.
Sticky is sometimes more interesting.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Thanks, Behe. So when I was reading through the, the comp plan, one of the things I was doing was looking for gaps or holes or missed connections. And I think I found some in this chapter, which I'd like to ask the, the staff to, to fill. So the first one of those is EV 2 and then EV 4 I'll talk about. EV 2 says very clearly, "Limit development in the Lake Waukam watershed." But then as I looked through the policies below that goal, none of them really talks about limiting development in Lake Waukam watershed. None of them talk clearly about limiting up zones or rejecting density increases. And I think, April, when I look at trying to limit development in the watershed, I see it as an equity concern, because right now, we are publicly subsidizing the fact that people live there. Our utility rates are higher because some of us live there. And if there's more development there, there will be more subsidy from the rest of the community. So, but getting back to the goal, I think I would like to have staff look at a policy that talks about limiting development in the watershed more explicitly. So there's a goal, but I don't, I don't see a policy which really states it clearly. And we're supposed to go from goals to policies to then actual implementation. There's like a little missing step in between there. So I, I would move that we ask the staff to add a policy that more explicitly addresses limiting development in the watershed and why, how we would do that through coordinated land use planning.
Staff, does anyone have, have any comments or?
Well, I, yes, I understand what Michael's saying. I, I, the, the policy that I read, I, some of the policies are, well, as they should be, you know, they're a little bit general, but the policy about implementing programs, regulation, and incentives to prevent the degradation of Lake Waukam gives us that platform and gives us that policy to do those very things. So as we update the subdivision code, we might, might take a look at that. Already, in the Lake Waukam Development Standards in BMC 1680, we have limitations in other parts of the code. So you might, if you have maybe a specific, we can maybe address it in the comments, and give some more thought to it.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do this is to not me necessarily write the language. And, and even though we have some implementing codes, I still see this gap. We have a high-level goal, kind of a vague, in-between-y policy, which talks mostly about reducing the impacts of development, low-impact development, for example, to prevent degradation, but doesn't really talk about limiting development in the watershed explicitly and clearly. And I think we need to be as open and clear and as plain as possible in our policy language, rather than having someone try to see in that policy, oh, I guess that implies this. I just, I just would like a one clear policy that talks about limiting development in the Lake Waukam watershed. What is the policy?
Mayor Kelly?
Obviously, there could be a policy that says that. And the other thing we need to remember is the policy document's supposed to, when Kim was reading the different things that you would do that would protect Lake Waukam, then there are ordinances and regulations and codes and zoning and all those things that are the specific things that implement the policy. So, so I don't know how specific it should be in the policy document, as long as it's specific in how you regulate the land use, because we say there can be limits.
I think it's just missing. It's not a matter of whether it's explicit enough, it's just kind of not quite there.
Well, I mean, obviously, that is something that goes on the tracker, and that's something that I guess the council would need to, to discuss if they would like to add something like that.
So Councilmember Lillquist, you made a motion. And the staff is kind of giving us an indication that they need some, that there is some policy, but the information maybe not there, if I'm understanding that correctly, or maybe not outlined right here. Do you feel it's appropriate to move towards a motion? Or do you want to give a chance for the staff to come back and show us where this policy information is?
Well, there are, there are two goals in that section. Protect and improve drinking water resources and limit development in Lake Waukam watershed. And I read every single one of those policies there is really talking about the first of those two policies, not the second one. I think there's just, it's too much, kind of, you have to read between the lines. And I, I think this is where it starts. It starts here at the top with us, with clear policy language, which then goes on down the line to, you know, justified implementation strategies, and then enabling ordinances and specific regulations. And there's, there's a gap in the middle right here at the policy language. We are the policymakers, and this is our policy document. So I would like to see something made more clear.
And I guess I'd say that that, I think that's perfectly legitimate, what Michael's saying. I don't know of making a motion to do it now without having the staff come back and make sure that you have all the information you need before you would necessarily say something like that. And that's the, that's kind of the staff report side, the, the pros and cons side. The, I think we all know, I believe, limiting development in the watershed is important. But I thought some of the, the thoughtfulness that you've been putting into looking at this plan is not necessarily adding things the first time we bring them forward, but having a chance to discuss them. And maybe you can do that today. Because the first time I ever saw any of these was when I sat down here at the table. So I can't tell you that I've looked at them and I'm ready to give staff direction, or you're, you might be ready to give staff direction.
I'm starting the conversation.
Yeah. Starting the conversation sounds like a great place to be.
Yeah, I think I'd, I'd definitely like to, it, it sounds like it's agreeable. I think what I've learned in this process, and, and, because we only go through it a little less than every decade, is, is how this is rolling. I've tried it three different ways, and I think this way seems to be working. So bringing forward our questions, letting staff know those, and then the expectation that all of those will come back. So sometimes I try to motion to make sure, and I think what I'm figuring out is, you know, presenting as much as I can in this meeting time and then handing over that information. So what I would like to hear, and I think you pointed it out, is sometimes we see things, but staff knows what they need in there in order to get us where we need to be. And so you had pointed out that one policy that you felt like that was really strong and, and if council needed to, you know, de-zone and never upzone areas and that kind of thing. So I think that's where I would like to hear more about. You guys know what you need in there. It sounds like you feel like comfortable it's in there. Maybe you could just explain it when you come back a little bit better. And then if, Michael, if you're not, if, if that doesn't satisfy, my understanding is at that point, we can make a motion for specific language in our next meeting, and then we can decide if the council, is that, that's kind of how this has been rolling?
Yes.
Okay. It just took me three meetings to figure it out.
So that motion? I'm sorry. You'll see in the materials from Monday, the comment tracker, like, anything like this that you suggested, we have a column for that. And then we have a staff response. In some cases, we're just answering a question or providing more information. In other cases, we're proposing an actual change to the language based on what you suggested. So we'll do that for these comments today as well.
Okay. So there was a motion, and there was a second. So we either take a vote, or Councilmember Lillquist, would, your thoughts on giving the staff an opportunity to come back to us?
The motion was basically requesting the staff to bring something forward. So that is, the motion is to give staff opportunity.
Okay. All right. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And again, that is, the motion was for staff to look at the environmental policy and what the actual limitations are for watershed development. Is that, is that correct, Michael?
Close enough.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Lillquist.
So the second one is very similar. Goal EV 4 just says, "Limit sprawl." But again, if you look in that section, most of those policies, or all of them, really have to do with the other, which is protecting and the restoration of ecological functions and habitats. The policies talk about mitigation, they talk about restoration of habitat. They don't really talk about limiting sprawl. So again, there's kind of this lack of specificity and clarity. Which of these policies really is directed at sprawl? Which has to do with adding to our urban boundaries in places that don't yet have infrastructure, and what the ecological impacts of expanding urban boundaries might be. There's just a lack of a policy statement. So I'd like to make the same motion, which basically is to ask staff to come forward with explicit policy language, which reflects goal EV 4 in that section, having to do with how we address and why we address limiting sprawl from an ecological perspective, because that's, this is the Environment Chapter.
Councilmember Barker?
I, before I second, because, so then we would go into discussion before we get the motion with a second. Can I just hear, like we did last time, you guys felt like there were specific policies that did do that goal? Which policies do you feel like really
to some of these comments. But just right off the bat, I would say EV 16, and that's using the Bellingham Habitat Restoration Technical Assessment in project design and development review. The idea behind that is that development and design, design of development would be informed by that document, because there's some areas that we just, that we have identified that have a high ecological value. Maybe it's not explicitly said there. The other thing is, I, we didn't really look at this chapter as, yes, it's in sections, it's in Lake Wacum, it's in critical areas, but it's one whole chapter. So that's why the, the policies are sequentially numbered. So it may not be like under the critical area section or under the habitat section, but it's somewhere in there, I think, or within the comprehensive plan. So I think I understand the point that you want to see kind of more direct link to that goal, limit sprawl, excuse, yeah, policies more linked to that. Personally, I think a lot of these address that. If you implement these policies, then we won't have sprawl, we won't be impacting our critical areas, we won't be impacting corridors and things like that. But we've also got balancing of zoning and, you know, reasonable use and that sort of thing. We can respond to this, I think, maybe in the comment tracker more, more comprehensively.
Yeah, let us look through the land use chapter where we've got some sprawl limiting policies and see if those are sufficient, Michael. But you're right, that they don't specifically reference the ecological impacts of sprawl.
And I'm looking for that integration, so that here in the environment chapter, the ecological aspects of sprawl are addressed. And those pointers may go to the other parts of the chapter. But right now, there's not an integration. There's kind of a gap in there.
EV 10 under goal, EV three in goal, EV four talks about sustainable land use and design alternatives. I believe part of the rationale for having the goal limit sprawl is it's part of the legacies and strategic commitments, and we're integrating those throughout each of the chapters. And then EV 10 was specifically related to land use, so it made sense to put it in that section. And we can cross-reference some of the land use goals and policies as we talked about before.
Just a couple of items. I don't know that we need to...
Oh, well, we have a motion. We have a motion on the table right now.
Sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that if that's what you were addressing. Is there anyone...
Well, I'm happy to second. I feel like they are going to do what you said, but if you feel strongly that you wanted in a motion that we have voted and it's...
I just think we should vote in the motion, so they'll go ahead with the instructions they already have.
Okay. Councilmember Liliquus, would you mind reiterating your motion?
Sure. This would be to ask staff to look at adding policy language in the section that addresses limiting sprawl. And that could include highlighting other regions in the comp plan that address that. We're creating a new policy language for this section.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Hamel?
Sorry, I had it myself there. I apologize.
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure.
For our discussion. So we talked a little bit about Lake Wacum, we talked a lot about Lake Wacum and protecting our drinking water source. But I don't see beyond the shoreline master plan, anything that suggests that we should be taking into account protections for Salish Sea. So I'd like there to be some type of language talking about the importance and value of those protections, since we do live on, you know, saltwater body. The other piece, EV 58 on page 18, it's the last page of the chapter. Somebody's got their mic on. Terry, can you...
Maybe could we pull that up on the, on the board? That was, you said EV...
EV 58.
Fifty-eight?
So it's the second to the last one. This is promote the disposal of hazardous and other waste in a manner that is safe to the environment and public health. And that's kind of working off Salish Sea protections. Oh, you get that up there.
And just for clarification, Councilmember Hamel, did you, were you just requesting the staff action on our Salish Sea? Okay.
And for EV 58, this is in relation to how hazardous materials are disposed of properly. One thing that the county's doing is they're looking at a pharmaceutical buyback program. And I think I'm very supportive of that. And I think that there could be some language in your very simple, and just in terms of the disposal of hazardous and other waste, including pharmaceutical products, because they do have an impact on the environment. There's also, the importance of a buyback program also affects some of the other topics that we're talking about in terms of public safety for like kids getting access to medicines that are left in cabinets. And if there's not an easy way for the parent to dispose of those medicines on, through like a, not even a buyback, but like a safe disposal program, like at a pharmacy, then that, that could, the kid could have access to the, the child could have access to those dangerous substances. So I just wanted to see if, you know, touching on those points, if we could include language that would say something in the effect of including pharmaceutical products under EV 58.
Mayor Kelly?
So that sounds like a program to me. The policy sounds like the hazardous and other wastes that are not safe. So I think it'd be interesting for me to hear the council discuss what, because you add that, there are other things you could add. So pretty soon, you're adding other specific things instead of putting those in an ordinance or the budget or something else. So that would be the only question I'd ask is, that's a really great idea, and I support that. But is that something that could come from the policies to a different level of policy?
I agree that it does brush up into kind of the weedy territory. But I guess what I'm trying to do is come to some alignment with the, with the county program, as you indicate, because it has value to me in terms of a, like a 30,000-foot policy perspective.
Councilmember Liliquus, then Barker.
I think adding a simple statement to include pharmaceuticals isn't going too far into program territory. I think it's a fine, high-level policy statement.
Councilmember Barker and then Bornnaman.
Well, one I do support, you, you had two things there, the Salish Seas and then the pharmaceutical. And it sounded like you were less wanting us to put in we were going to follow this particular program, and more just wanting the language of pharmaceutical along with waste and hazardous. Is that what you were asking for?
That's correct.
Councilmember Bornnaman?
I guess if it's put, you know, is just a word, and it's part of that, if they're looking, I can support it. But otherwise, I support it, but I don't think it rises to the level of a comp plan policy, which is more overarching kinds of policies. So I don't really think it standalone belongs in the comp plan. But if it's adding pharmaceutical to the words of within hazardous waste, then I could support it. But otherwise, I just don't think it rises to, because there's so many things we can add, you know, with it that are good programs. But it's not really, you know, that's my feeling on the comp plan in general.
Councilmember Hamel?
I appreciate that, those comments, Terry. And that's, that's exactly what I'm trying to get, is just adding two words into that EV 58.
And so staff, are you clear on the, so you'll come back to us with, and I do believe, our city does have a safe disposal program for pharmaceuticals, so with our drugstores. And I'm trying to remember what it has, has a name. But we do, the city already does have a program for that. So maybe that's something we can put out as a reminder.
Pharmaceutical Take Back Program.
Thank you. Yeah, for, yeah, and we do fund that. So we do have a program. All right. So the staff, are we, are we clear on those two, okay, action items? Councilmember Liliquus?
Yeah, I want to talk about the urban forestry plan. I really want to talk to you, Lisa. You and I and Rick Sepler had a meeting, and I gave some feedback on ways to what I call better coordinate our land use planning and the environmental planning through the urban forestry plan. It's not in here, but I want to make sure it's in the comment tracker, and it will be replied to. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Becker?
Okay. I'm going to leave a lot of my little ones here for you guys. But in looking through here, I was hoping you could point out, when we start looking at environmental issues, we know that they, especially when we're implementing programs and putting provisions on people and things that we're going to do, they can become quite costly. And sometimes we get our eye on that, but we forget the, again, the burden that that's going to create to others. And I think it's part of like the triple bottom line and other things. But I, I didn't see goal EV nine, which is, oops, the last page there, I guess if you want to put it up, kind of gets to the point. But I'm interested in where the language is that we, we know, because it is part of our social justice and equity legacy, that we'll make sure that we're looking at those unintended consequences and not disproportionately impact already burdened. So like the carbon tax that came out, and a lot of people were really on that. And then they realized, oh, my goodness, this is going to affect the workers that are trying to get in and out of the city, that are trying to just do the basics. And when we get super focused on one and we're not looking at the other. So did we have language in here that acknowledges the fact that we're going to be kind of looking at all those unintended consequences and make sure we're not overburdening a particular sect of society? Is that, because I might have missed it or not, you, you, when you guys read these, you read them so differently than a layperson, because you understand that policy language. So do you think that's in there and stated appropriately?
I, we can look.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. And that is a question that, as we're discussing, anything that comes forward to the council that you can ask.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of your job, is to make sure that we didn't miss something that is a policy.
It is our job, and other councils can dismantle policy as, well as other electeds. But I think when we, it's, it's harder to dismantle it if it's actually in there. It has to be looked at and acknowledged. And as I've said before, I'm so profoundly thankful for the staff that we have and the way you guys do look at things. When I've come to you with some concerns, you usually almost always have an answer if you've looked at that. But that's because of your mindedness, and different administration, different council might not think that same way, and might not care about people who are overburdened because we make a decision as a city that's going to make a financial impact for others. So that would be my suggestion. And I'm, I'm sure it's probably in there. I just didn't, I didn't see it. So, and that's my only reason when I push on these a little bit, I push back, is just because I've, I've seen it. We're seeing it right now. When other people get empowered, things can, things can change. So I want to at least make them dismantle it.
And I was just supporting the words that are in there, which is the interdependency between social, economic, and environmental.
In that goal, yeah.
And if we're always looking at that, then it shouldn't slip through the cracks. And if it looks like it does, there's a policy goal that you can come back to.
Back to people, place, profit. Okay, thank you.
And that was for EV 49, is that right?
No. EV nine. And I, I think that's what that's trying to get at, that people, place, profit. I, I thought that's what it was. But again, as I started looking through the policies, I didn't, it didn't quite ring as true. But I'll say it again. I think sometimes you guys understand that language so much deeper than I do. You can maybe just interpret it for me and let me know that maybe just like the mayor did, that's strong enough right there that staff should be looking at that, that social just as much. So it, we've had a lot of those things around, but we still seem to be doing it even at a national level. And I would, I would hope our city was proactive enough. We were avoiding that, so.
Okay. Councilmember Liliquus?
Yeah, actually, let me kind of go back to the beginning for these two E chapters, environments and economic development. Both these are optional chapters, and both of them were added at the city council's initiative. And I think adding them has put the city, you know, head and shoulders above a lot of other communities. You know, round one of both of these was good, and this is round two, and it's much better. So I really like these documents. I do have a small question on EV 13. It looks like the Planning Commission struck the last sentence on watershed approach to environmental planning. Is there a reason that was struck? Is there a reaction to that? Was that a trivial issue or a hot button?
So you'll see a map, a watershed map on page five of the chapter. And I think generally they struck that sentence, which says, do you want to show on the screen?
Yeah, it's not, it's not in private.
It's page seven on the chapter. They struck the language that says the watershed approach should be conducted at the level of the city's watershed boundaries or lower. I think they just didn't want staff specifying for them the definition of where mitigation should occur. So the first part of the sentence is general, and it says, select wetland mitigation sites for unavoidable impacts based on current state mitigation guidance documents and on the watershed approach, with an emphasis on the ecologically preferable site. So they just thought that second part was a little too specific.
So watershed approach is already in there, and they just didn't want to repeat watershed approach again? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Was there additional staff presentation, or does that conclude the comments?
No, but we do need, we did say on the agenda bill that there would be a comment, public comment period.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we've, before we move into that, that the staff has finished their presentation. And then Councilmember Bornnaman, you have a question.
Well, I just wanted to check before we move from this. Because, Michael, on your handouts, you had one relating to policy EV 25. And since you didn't bring it up, and so I, I don't know if you were doing away with that, because I don't agree with your statement on it.
Okay, well...
And, and the reason, you know, this...
As I said in the letter, I think it needs to be, I was seeing a potential conflict between our parks and recreation approach and environmental approach. But I think it's better addressed in the parks half of the equation, not in this half.
Yep. But before it gets there, in case it's attached to this, why I don't think there is a conflict with the language with it. Because this relates to policy EV 25, says limit public and pet access to, and their impacts to the most sensitive and unique habitats, and employee measures to minimize impacts and public access. It does not say ban all public access and, and pet access and their impacts. And you contrasted that with the pro-plan language of access to sensitive, to select sensitive areas may be provided through low-impact trails. Key words again, it's select sensitive, not all, and not most sensitive, and low-impact trail. So it's not, these aren't, I don't see them as in conflict, because it's saying they may be able to, in some sense, in some sensitive areas, it doesn't say the most sensitive areas, may be able to put low-impact trails, which does limit those kinds of impacts on it. So I don't see, you know, if you look at, at the way the language is, I don't see that that is a conflict with it. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, before we're...
Well, then it sounds like you'll agree with my suggestion, which is...
Not necessarily. I don't think it's needed. That's why I'm saying it.
Which is that recreational access should not be provided when it is in conflict.
And I'm just saying, sometimes when the language is there and you're basing changes on something that doesn't need to be changed, it's not necessary. That's why I'm bringing it up. So that's, I just wanted to throw that out there. But, but yeah.
Okay. Well, let's move to the...
I've got a question about the public comment period, because I'm really confused with this, because we had a public hearing. We closed the public hearing to pub, to verbal input. We left it open for written. And now, this is a work session, and we're supposed to be considering this process based on the comments from the public hearing, from the Planning Commission, and from staff, and from the documents. But now, we're reopening the public hearing for us to consider again.
I'll address that.
And that's not how we've ever done this before.
I'll address that.
I'm confused.
Okay. I'll address that. And actually, you'll be surprised, Terry, to know that it's partly because of you. So the issue was that two weeks ago, the traditional process so far has been that if an organization or somebody wants to come to council and do a presentation, that we, the, you talk to the chair, the chair looks at the agenda, works with those people, and a presentation is put forth. There was a presentation by Michael Lewis, which I was, again, went through all the right channels in regards to how that presentation should be put forth to council. And then when I put it on the agenda, there was a fair amount of pushback, partly due from you, that I should require the public to make comments if I was going to allow for that presentation. So because of this pushback, I allowed for there to be an opportunity for the public... So because of this pushback, I allowed for there to be an opportunity for the public to comment. Now, what it did is it set a precedence, is that we allowed for public comment to happen in that particular portion of our comprehensive plan. Now, this is something that I discussed with the planning department. And because we set this precedence, we now have put this, because we started that way, we have to continue that way. So this is how this actually evolved and there is now a public comment after the comment. Councilmember Bornerman.
Yes. To be accurate, on the last one, when the speaker was going to speak, it was during our work session on the comp plan. It wasn't a separate presentation, which would have been perfectly fine. That's why I objected. And I said, if you're following through with this, you need to provide equal access from neighborhood groups to be able to talk. I didn't say public comment. I said it needs to be equal access and, and the neighborhood organizations need to be notified so that they're able to, be able to put that. If you're opening up the public comment or opening this back up to have a paid speaker from specific groups to address us during our work session. And so I didn't suggest that we have a public comment period in it because I didn't think that was appropriate.
But that is.
But I would just comment that that shouldn't be done.
The process to include the public is a format of public comment. So we can have the discussion.
Let me just explain where this whole thing started. It started in the planning committee. Jack Weiss started a ritual in the planning committee that when we were doing work sessions, he saved fifteen minutes for public comment. That's exactly where it came from. And I was going to use the same scenario. The other thing I took blame for, it was set up by me, it was wrongly set up. We don't have to go down that road anymore. But there is a precedence for having public comment in the committee meetings. It's up to the chair of the committee whether to accept public comment or not. Years ago, we never did it that way, but that bucket was opened up by Mr. Weiss and others have followed. So that's, that's, that's important.
One moment, Councilmember Bornerman. I, I'd like a moment to, this is something that we did discuss with the planning department. So Greg, would you mind weighing in whether you feel, again, we have a precedent. So whether you feel that this should be included or if we, this something that the council feels like we, we should decide whether we're going to continue this way or not.
It's, Jean's right. It's at the chair's discretion whether you want to have public comment during your work sessions or not. All we would say is that if you're going to do it, let us know so that we can advertise it that way, so that everyone has the opportunity to come and comment if they want to. We were a little bit taken by surprise by this, the speaker that Jean referenced. And so, you know, if you, like Terry said, if you're going to open it up and allow public comment, we need to be able to publicize that and we need to allow anyone who wants to speak to do it. It's at your discretion whether you want to do that or not.
Okay, we'll continue this discussion, but just for clarification, this is published and today there will be a public comment.
Yes, yes, it was published for today.
Councilmember Murphy, is there?
I was just going to say, let's do it.
Okay. Councilmember Bornerman.
But in my talking with Peter before, I think you need to say that you're reopening the public hearing for public comment because we closed that. And once you close, once you close that to public comment, you need to, it's closed for that. And that's why I'm pointing out the process because this is a continuation in a sense of that, of that, because we're considering that public hearing. So you need to reopen. Isn't that correct? I think that's what you told me when we discussed it before.
I believe we did when we had the last public comment. Is that not correct?
So the reality is that when you have public comment at a work session dedicated to a comp plan discussion, it will be part of the record. And that's the main thing. So when I took, take it that you're going to open public comment, you are implicitly opening up the record. But ultimately, it is council's decision as to how you, whether you want to have that as part of the process. But. As long as it's noticed appropriately. So, so you can be more explicit and say, and the record is being opened for purposes of public comment, but it is implicit in, in your doing this during a work session.
Okay. So personally, I mean, we're allotting fifteen minutes for public comment. I don't think it ever hurts to have people have public comment. And as we're going along and people are learning and discovering new things, I learn something new every single time as well. So I just want to, I'm going to ask the question one more time. Today's public comment will go forward is whether the council feels as though it is okay to have fifteen minute public comment period during these sessions or if from this moment forward, we want to not include that. Councilmember Parker.
I appreciate the input, but I just always like to defer to the chair. I think that's the chair's responsibility. And if you want to have it in there, great. And it's, you're, you're the one taking on that responsibility and you, you know the reasoning behind it. And if you don't, you don't, so.
Councilmember Bornerman.
I'm fine with doing it as long as we follow the, the process and we were, we were included in it because when, once, the process is, once it's closed, it's closed unless it comes back to the council to reopen. And that hadn't been done. And so if the council's okay with it, I'm fine as long as we're saying we're reopening the public process and this isn't, because this had been, hadn't been followed.
Councilmember Lillquist and Hammel.
Personally, I think more public comment, the better. Personally, I have no problem reopening the record. I just think it's important, we need to be open and transparent so that all sides are notified and everyone has opportunity.
I'm fine with the additional comment and would defer to the chair's discretion.
Okay, so, and I just want to note that we did say defer to the chair, but sometimes when the chair makes decisions, those decisions are questioned. So if you are asking the chair to be responsible for this, please respect the decisions of the chair. And I'm going to say that I don't think there's anything wrong with having public comment. This is a very important process. It happens every ten years and I think the more engaged. What was I? The more engaged the public is in the process and everyone feels an opportunity, I think the more open and engaged we all are. So I'm, as the chair, going to say at this moment that we will include a public comment. And let's move on to that public comment, shall we? Is there any names signed up there? Because I can see how engaged we are, so let's. Is there anyone who cares to speak on, please come on down?
I've never heard there's a sign of she.
Okay, okay. Well, you know what? I will always ask just in case because sometimes people don't realize. So we are going to follow the three-minute rule and so, Linda, if you could please.
Linda Trigell, Building Industry Association. I sent a letter out today, for those who want a hard copy, there you go. Whoops. What I wanted to comment about was indeed process. The comment, the one reason we asked for this to happen was that during the planning commission considerations throughout the last, Lord, year and a half, they had a habit of allowing the staff presentation, then they took public comment for, I think, up to a half an hour. I'm not sure what the time limit was. And then they did their voting. And the advantage was you don't hear all this at the beginning of the plan and during the staff presentation, stuff may come up that if there are neighborhood people or professionals or whatever in the audience who say, oh, wait a minute, here's a thought on that one, there's a chance to pitch in and give you guys feedback before you make decisions. That was very handy. I appreciate the language overhead. If we could get that just a little bit enlarged from the fourth seat back here, it's real hard to see at this, this size, so I'll throw that out. I'm old, maybe it's me, I don't know. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to mention was, because we're commenting at the end, let me address myself to your next meeting when we're doing land use and capital facilities and, and housing and so forth. We have had capital facilities, basically, analysis regarding expansion of the UGA, what it would cost to supply water and sewer and so forth and why you do or don't want to do it. One of the main ways we are looking at addressing growth is infill. And we supposedly have all these lots out there that are buildable lots. I would like to see a capital facilities analysis of some of these larger areas showing you what, for instance, what we were calling existing deficiencies might exist in the city at this point, so that we have a real, serious analysis and look at what have we got available and how can we use it or if not, not. So I'm hoping in the next time, we can somehow tie capital facilities needs to these remaining buildable lots in, that are in large areas, not every tiny lot. But you know, there are some large areas of the city that are not yet developed so that we can, we can get a good comparison. You can see what, what, how one compares to the other. And in conjunction with that, I don't have a figure in front of me, but I believe the land analysis had some figure about regarding jobs and the economic chapter. How many people work here and how many people live here? I can't remember the exact number, but it seems like we were saying sixty-six percent or better of the people who work here don't live here. That's my definition of limiting sprawl. Please consider that if you look into some policies regarding limiting sprawl would be how do you keep people within the city limits if that indeed is your goal? Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Is there anyone else who cares to speak during our public comment? Please come on down and if you could please state your name and I will set the timer.
My name is Jeff Middo. I live in South Hill. First of all, in terms of your process, I work with a group of fifteen neighborhoods, association people, and we've been participating in this. And in terms of public comment, we just want to know what the rules are and when they are. So, so, and if a rule is good for us, they're good for everybody. So that's all I wanted to say. Michael, thank you for responding to some of my comments on the environment chapter. I think you're the only one that read them, but I appreciate what you've said in that I'm a strong advocate for urban forestry and I believe that we have to live with the urban forest in our environment and we have to integrate the issues, all the issues that fit into the urban environment. In April, I really appreciate your concerns about what I call environmental justice and the unintended consequences of our policies that is, that affects a whole class of people out there that aren't always participating in these complex processes. I wanted to let you know that I think neighborhoods are very concerned about that issue also. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I didn't, I didn't get the comment, so can, will you forward his comments? Oh.
Is there anyone else who has comments for public comment period? No? All right, going once, going twice, three times, and I am going to close public comment on the comp plan hearing for environmental and economic development. Oh, oh.
Thank you. Just to be clear, so as before, the written comment remains open?
Thank you. Written comment does remain open. And just for clarification, is that for two weeks or for the entire process until we, in the comp plan?
Typically, we accept comments all the way through the process.
Okay, so again, I want to reiterate that. We will accept comments on the comp plan process until we are complete. Okay. So next is, and that concludes committee of the whole. We are going to move to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes in front of us today. The first one was for a special meeting of the committee of the whole on June twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next meeting minutes were for committee of the whole, sorry, for our committee meeting minutes for July eleventh, twenty sixteen. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, and that brings us to older new business. Councilmember Murphy.
In this evening's council meeting, I'll just be expressing appreciation for the tour de walk home.
Councilmember Hammel.
And I will bring this up later in, in this evening's meeting, but I do want to thank the two hundred-plus volunteers that came out last Friday and worked at the, at Bellingham High School on behalf of about five hundred and seventy people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. The numbers are a little bit higher, slightly higher than, than last year. It's a heartbreaking situation that we have, but I'd want to thank the mayor and Councilmember Barker for, for volunteering as well as other community volunteers.
Councilmember Bornerman.
Yeah, I want to bring up an idea that I've discussed with the mayor. And it relates to a, a lot of the national news that has been going on for a while now about the deaths of a number of black men and uprising of, of people in, in different communities against the police and other things. And comments that we've been getting in this community about what is Bellingham going to do? What is Bellingham doing about the issues of police and race and other things? We know, I know, and I think everybody else here knows, that we have, we have a very good police force and we've worked and we've been very proactive for a long time in trying to put in place policies and hiring policies and other things that address many of the issues that have affected other communities. But the community doesn't necessarily know that. I read this morning, from yesterday's paper, there was a very good article that expresses a bit of that about the black family here in town whose son had always wanted to be a policeman and now he was feeling very frightened of the police. And they met with our police department and it was a good, good meeting. But a lot of people in the community are asked, a number are asking questions and they don't know what's going on. So I would like to propose a community type of meeting, and I'm not sure what that structure is exactly, but that would give a chance for community, for us to address, the police chief, the mayor, councilor, whatever, to address some of those things that we're putting in place. One, to acknowledge our recognition that there are problems and there have been problems in a lot of communities and that we take these concerns very seriously here. People need to hear that, I think, and let them know about some of the things that we have been doing and to take questions of concern so that we don't have some of the situations, because this is not Ferguson, this is not most, a lot of other places. But people in minority families are at times, you know, they have the conversation. When you're stopped, not if you're stopped, make sure you, you know, conversations to African-American boys and Hispanic boys that don't happen in, many times, in white families because they don't have to give that. And I know, and I know of, as I hear from a lot of parents and as a parent of brown-skinned children. And so I wanted to throw that up to the council before I pursued it any farther to see if, if I could have approval to, you know, discuss this with the chief and to, and work with maybe Marie and the mayor about trying to put something together.
I, I think this is an excellent discussion to have, Councilmember Bornerman. I believe Mayor Kelly and then Councilmember Lillquist.
We, we have a really good basis. Last Wednesday, we invited, April was at the meeting, to the Neighborhood Advisory Commission invited Deputy Chiefs Dahl and Simons to come to the meeting and to really look at all the information that we may have been getting from community members about what, what to do, what to do, what to do. And allow both of them to talk about what Terry was talking about, what we've done, when we did it, how many people it's affected, that type of thing. So I think there's a great presentation that the, that the police department could make. It would be then, do you do it at a city council meeting or do you have a, some other kind of a neighborhood, not a neighborhood, but a community meeting? And that would be up to the council. But the information has been researched, so it's, it's readily available.
Okay. Councilmember Lillquist and Bornerman will come back to you.
I think that trust is the single most valuable thing in any community.
I think that trust is the single most valuable thing in any community, and I think what Terry is suggesting is a way to keep and build that trust. I've heard some of the same comments, Terry. Why don't we do community policing in Bellingham? And, but we do. Oh, I didn't know that. And there are communities, hey, you know, you've got to stop fining people to make city revenue. There are some cities out there that apparently have these treadmills of low-level fines that use to balance their city budget. We don't do that. But I've been asked, why does the city do that? And the answer is, we don't do that. So whatever kind of event we can have that helps build that trust, trust I think we've already earned, I think we should do it. And I think it should be maybe more accessible in a city council meeting. I think we should go and meet the public on the best place where the public is, not at our convenience.
Councilmember Bornham.
Yeah, one, I agree, I don't think it should just be in a city council meeting, but I would like it to be, I would like it to be a standalone kind of meeting that, where the public's invited, and where BTV 10 is there, so it can be seen by a broader part of the, of the community. So people know what we're doing, and know what concerns are, and how we respond to that, you know, so.
Councilmember Parker.
I support it. I would suggest also it's non-council. We know where our concentrated poverty is, and we know that also we have a higher number of people that are minority populations there. I would suggest that we actually go to those populations, those neighborhoods, and have it there. The reason being, it sounds like the point is, you, yourself, who's experienced this, and then us that have friends that have children that are minority races, and present very much so, these discussions that I don't have with my young son, granted he's not driving yet, but they're just not discussions I would have with him, about what do you do when the police pull you over, and you have to have your hands on the wheel, and you, you know, these very serious, and the fear. So I could see this as being a brilliant way of outreach with the police department, really giving a great preface of what we are doing, and then opening it up. There's people who have questions about all kinds of different initiatives and campaigns, and I think some came up about a citizens oversight committee. I would hope that it's less of us tooting our horn of what we're doing, and more of us saying, let's let you guys really know what we are doing, and then let's get some feedback, and kind of go from there. So it might be something that maybe goes a couple times, but I wholeheartedly support it. I think I could learn a lot from it going there, and I think that we're going to have to go to the people that we're most trying to reach.
Councilmember Bornham, do you want to make a motion for?
Yeah, I would like to, well, I would like to make a motion that, well, first, I want to address April's concern, and this will be part of, because I hear what you're saying, I think that's a good idea, but I think it would be good to have a community meeting in and of itself, where we can have the questions and answers televised, and then our police officers or whatever go to different parts of the community as well. I think it should be probably a two-part thing, but I think the other, you know.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting, holding the meeting. When we hold the meeting, instead of here, we go out into the community.
But we're trying to get it, well, I'm going to make a motion that we put together that council allows me to work with Marie, with Marie and the mayor, and the police chief on putting together a program, we can bring it back for approval, or whatever, to do it, if that's, you know.
Second.
And we can arrange, we can't tape for BTV 10, just any, you know, anywhere, those places are easier, but we, we do tape in different locations across the city, so.
So maybe could I suggest an amendment to the motion, that it be held in an environment where BTV 10 could televise the event?
Yes.
Okay, so, the motion including the amendment is that we have, and help me if I'm wording off here, Terry, so, that we host a public meeting that could be televised by BTV 10 to include the community, to discuss, what's our framing on it, public safety, and maybe racial and discrimination concerns.
Yes, that sounds good.
Does that seem, okay, all right, so, all those in favor, or any discussion, I'm sorry, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Does anyone else have anything for older new business today? Okay, so, we are going to move into executive session. We have three items for today. We, executive sessions are closed to the public, but there will be reported in our regular meeting tonight. There are three executive sessions. Note, there is a change of order per Amy Cren's request. First one, potential real estate sale or lease. Next, potential litigation. Brady, approximately 10 minutes. Potential property acquisition stamps, approximately five minutes. So in total, this is 25 minutes. I will be back here at 4:45, or sorry, 3:45 to adjourn or extend. Thank you.